Chainar.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Okane.
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn the closed session. Second?
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Okane.
Aye.
Chainar.
Aye.
Call for call, please.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Okane.
Here.
Chainar. Scott.
Here, can we stand for a moment, a silent period, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Rachel, one friend. All right, we have Scott and make your reads, whereas Red Ribbon Campaign is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation and a way for people and communities to take a visible stand against the misuse of substances. Whereas Red Ribbon Week provides an opportunity for all community members to celebrate making healthy choices. And whereas the Red Ribbon symbolizes a commitment to no unsafe or illegal uses of substance, now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of the 23rd and 31st of October, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week in Sioux City, Iowa, and call upon all our citizens to join the City of Sioux City and Sulan Cares in our community-wide effort to promote this year's theme, Life is a Movie, Film Drug Free. I want to present this to you, say a few words if you would.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Sulan Cares, I want to thank the city for all your support of prevention in the community. In front of the council members, I do have red ribbons. Anyone else who wants some, we are making more tonight. We have the young ambassadors here who will be making some this evening. I also wanted to give you to pass out to the rest of the council, our source for Sulan data booklets for this year. I think when we're talking about prevention of substance use in the community, it's important to know that everything kind of ties together when we're looking at the economic stability of the community, looking at education, health, and safety. What we want to do is really make sure that our families are healthy and happy altogether. And when we can do that, we can support a happy, healthy, drug-free community. So, thank you for all of your support.
Thanks, Rachel. We have a proclamation that reads, whereas lights on after school, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 24th, 2024 promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas more than 28 million children in the United States have parents who work outside the home, and 19.4 million children have no place to go after school. Whereas Beyond the Bell, Girls Inc. and Boys and Girls Club have provided significant leadership in the areas of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Sioux City, Iowa is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in a global economy. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the council, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024, as Lights On After School Day, and encourage our communities to engage in the innovative after-school programs and activities and ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for children after school.
Well, I'd like to thank the council and the city for all their support as well. And as many of you know, every day in Iowa, over 125,000 kids leave school with no place to go. And those critical after-school hours are really what our organizations come together to try to address, to ensure that kids have a safe place to be kids and that we are putting them on the right path for their future. So, we're excited to spend Lights On After School Day, really giving back to the community, involving the community in what we do, and making sure that we can stay open and do the great work that we do for a long time. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Consent agenda today is items two through 12F. Consider these to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call is asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read the item. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Please remember to always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second? Two is a reading of the October 14th City Council minutes. Three is a motion appointing Anthony Gall to the Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees. Four is a resolution authorizing the purchase of property insurance from Mill, Shell, Hammer, Fitz and Associates. Five are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a contract amendment number two with the Iowa Finance Authority for American Rescue Plan Act Emergency Rental Assistance Fund. B is a resolution approving an application to HUD to fund two Housing Choice Voucher Family Self-Sufficiency Program coordinators. C is a resolution approving the application to the DOT Federal Highway Administration Bridge Investment Program. Six are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the South Mulberry Street Improvement Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Nebraska Street Water Main Replacement Project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Tyson Event Center Roof Replacement Project. D is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Floyd Riverfront and Plywood Trail Connector Project. E is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Art Center HBAC Replacement Project, Phase One. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the South Mulberry Street Improvement Project. B is a resolution approving the consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting for the Glen Oaks Boulevard Paving Project. C is a resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with Subservco for the 19th Street Emergency Rip-Rap Project. I need to abstain conflict of interest. E is a resolution approving amendment number one to the consulting services agreement with HR Green for the Hamilton Boulevard Mill and Overlay Project. E is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with ProSource Technologies for the Sioux City Flood Recovery Project. Eight are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the authorized payroll complement for one temporary neighborhood services outreach supervisor position in community development. B is a resolution amending the position classification manual for the position of lead communications operator and communications operator. Nine are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Subservco for the Buckwalder Drive Storm Sewer Outfall Repair Project. I need to abstain conflict of interest. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Midland Restoration for the Lewis and Clark Park Joint Seallet Project. Ten are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Bree, and scheduling a hearing for the property at 2500 Chautauqua Drive. Mayor, that hearing, that public hearing date is scheduled for November 25th, is that correct? Is that correct, Nicole?
Let me.
It just seems like it's far out. But I guess this is the 21st, and you have to do your published, yeah, you have to be publishing your notice.
Yes.
November 25th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. B is a resolution announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Moose Building for property at 4001 Glen Avenue, 2500 South St. Aubin Street, and 423-425 South Ruston Street, and scheduling a hearing.
I had some comments on that, Jill. Jill, I just had some questions. I was trying to look back and see what the timeline proposal was for this, as far as when they would be developed.
Sure. Jill, one of the neighborhood services manager, they have until the end of 2025 to finish construction.
Okay, and then the second question is, do we, have we thought about or worked with them at all to see if we need to work on setbacks, spacing, anything like that, to make adjustments, to be able to make these, like capitalize on, I mean, some of these properties are fairly tight. And so, I'm just thinking that we should be a good partner in this. I think what we're doing is really great, but I think really we need to look at utilizing the space we have, and if we need to make adjustments between different homes or different things, that that might be to our benefit as well.
Sure. The property at the corner of Glen Avenue and South St. Aubin is kind of a challenging property to develop because of the grade.
Yeah.
And the corner right there, and the setback requirements for driveways and those kinds of things. So, we're proposing one house on that property just because of the space. And then, over on South Ruston, that's currently one parcel, he's going to subdivide it into two, and there'll be two homes there. Planning and zoning commission, it was a while ago, planning and zoning and city council rezoned that already, probably late last year.
Yeah.
To residential, it was commercial. So, it should be ready to go. We can fit two homes on that, on that one parcel that'll be split, so that's a positive, too.
Okay.
Jill, while you're up, Jill, while you're up here on Agenda Item 5A, I wanted to make a comment on the city's rapid rehousing and homeless prevention programs. We're getting that increase because of your continued success, our continued success in the, in the program, correct?
Yes, so initially, we got around about 572,000. This summer, the state announced they had additional funds available, so we got another 750,000 because we had spent through that full amount. In the most recent months, we've been averaging about expenditures of around 100,000 a month, and that is in rental payments for those that are in our rapid rehousing program and those that are also in our homelessness prevention program that have gotten an eviction notice, we're working with them to stay housed. So, once we saw those numbers, we anticipated we would have been out of funds in February, so we contacted the state again. They have additional funding available that other, out of their communities were not able to utilize, so we're taking that here, and we have to spend it by the end of September, 2025. So, we've been able to help a lot of people. We're looking forward, though, once these funds end. Is there another funding source we can capitalize on? Because it's been a huge need in our community, particularly with the homelessness prevention.
Excellent results, thank you for that. C is a resolution proposing to grant a temporary easement for a portion of the alley of budding 810 South Cecilia Street, the petitioner is Tom Neswick. D is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Stanley Johns, and scheduling a hearing, the property at 2503 Discovery Boulevard, Unit 6. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license. Twelve are boards, commission, and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero. Hearing thirteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans for the sidewalk assessment program. I'll move that. I'll second. Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Mr. Padmore, could I just clarify on this, this, the sidewalk assessment program project is along the same lines as what's been proposed earlier?
Yes.
As far as the plans go?
Yes.
So, nothing's changed since then?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'm just asking if any of the plans and specs changed, Gordon, from the prior ones that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, I think it was?
Gordon Fair, City Engineer, other than maybe a location of the sidewalk, moving it in or out, and the size, we talked about reducing the size.
Okay, so at that one location, and I don't remember the address, I apologize, but, but it's going to be moved closer to the curb side, I think.
And made smaller.
And then made smaller. And then made smaller. The other one.
So, we're on go with that, okay?
And the homeowner's been in touch with it, I mean, we've been dealing with them.
Okay, good, thank you. Anyone else be heard? Hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Fourteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the construction of the Gordon Drive Storm Sewer Repair Project. I'll move that. Second? Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Velatus for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, the property at 2503 Discovery Boulevard, Units 3, 5, and 7. I'll move that. Second? Public hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Presentation by Sulan Initiative.
Robert Doherty, Economic and Community Development. Mayor and council, about three or four weeks ago, we had on the agenda approval of the annual contribution to the Sulan Initiative, and the council asked for an opportunity to hear from the initiative and ask a few questions, so I got to thinking about that. We've been partnering with the initiative for, since the beginning, I think maybe 30 years ago or something, but haven't always had a lot of chance to, to have open discussions about that. So, Chris is here, Chris McGowan's here today to answer your questions.
Chris McGowan, the Sulan Initiative, 101 Pierce Street, Sioux City, Iowa. Mr. Mayor requests permission to approach to distribute the annual report.
Perfect, thank you.
As Mr. Doherty just implied, the relationship between the City of Sioux City and the Sulan Initiative dates back to 1988. The Initiative was founded by a group of business leaders who, working with elected officials, determined that much more could be accomplished for the Sulan Metro in a cooperative alliance than a competitive one. At that time, to go to Dunes was really not in existence at this time, but now Iowa, Nebraska, and South Dakota partner. The annual report that was just distributed to each of you was published this past Friday and distributed to, to our investors for the first time. It summarizes what activity we have been engaged in together over the, over the course of the last fiscal year, our fiscal year, which runs October 1st to September 30. It also concludes with some, some good news. It was actually news that came out after the annual report was published, just in the middle of last week, and there's a freestanding document and letter that is an insert to that document, but it talks about where Iowa, Nebraska, and South Dakota were ranked recently by a national think tank for their fiscal responsibility. And I'm pleased to report that Iowa ranked number one in the nation, Nebraska ranked number two, and South Dakota was tied for number four. And you'll find that summary in that document, again, in the freestanding literature. Of course, you are all, as elected officials, familiar with the confidential projects that we're working on collaboratively at this time. We can't discuss those publicly because each of us is governed by non-disclosure agreements, but we continue to move forward on those projects. We are cautiously optimistic about the capital investment and job creation that is in the pipeline. We will continue to work closely with Director Durham, of course, who was formerly the president of the Sulan Initiative. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Well, Chris, I would just say I appreciate the information, and I wasn't able to make the luncheon last week because I was out of town at a conference, but I appreciate now, at least, having this and being able to look through it. The one question I had, and I don't remember if I asked last year, I know with the, the change of positions in, as far as the workforce development position that was with your office there, out of TSI, what has the, the goals, I know that chairs kind of bring in different projects or initiatives, ideas of what they want to get behind, and I know right now, it has been really a focus on quality of life amenities, different things, complimenting the businesses to be able to recruit and retain them. Would you say that's still an initiative of yours, or is the workforce development side of it, are those discussions continuing, or have you thought about bringing back that position, or do you see that we've been able to kind of maintain where we're at or grow where we're at?
So, it's an excellent question, Alex, and we have been without that position for over two years now. Some of this is due to coming out of COVID and ramping up again, but part of this is to, part of this is also us trying to be as responsible as possible. As most of you know, and as is summarized in the document that I just presented to you, 80% of our funds come from the private sector, 20% come from our public sector partners in a cooperative alliance with organizations like the City of Sioux City. That said, our focus coming out of COVID has been multifaceted. Number one, we're still focused on workforce. Number two, we've partnered with you on some land acquisition in the past. Number three, quality of life. So, we will continue to focus on all three of those things. Workforce solution, that's a very difficult nut to crack, but we have, through a retreat led by Director Debbie Durham a couple of years ago, said, let's focus on quality of life. I'm very pleased to say that I think our quality of life is outstanding. I think the number of projects that have been added in the, in the very recent past, in no small part due to city council and city manager, and then, I think Matt was with us a short time ago, Parks and Rec leadership. I think Combe Park and the bike trail and the bike system there is a phenomenal addition. I think the development of the riverfront is an excellent addition for our community, and there are several projects like that. And our objective there is to continue to enhance quality of life so we may continue to attract young professionals, young families, and potential employers. So, it remains a focus, but I would say this, Alex, in summary, it is important to us now, and you know what our economic development pipeline is, large capital investments with fewer jobs because there is so much pressure on the labor market at this time. Any other questions?
The only other one I had, and again, I'm naive, and I don't think I've asked it before, is just, does the county participate as well? Because you were talking about your private, or private and public funding.
Yes. Woodbury County does financially participate, they have for not nearly as long as the City of Sioux City. I would guess somewhere in the 10 to 15-year range now. South Sioux City has participated for longer than that, and so, we're grateful for those municipal partnerships, and we're also grateful for our, grateful for our relationship with you. We recognize that we don't always agree on everything. We don't have to agree on everything, but we ought to be able to have a spirited dialogue to advance what we believe is in the best interest of our community. If that means we disagree from time to time, I think we can all live with that. I think we're all on the same page in trying to advance our community and make the best decisions for our community, our taxpayers, our businesses, our residents, and hopefully our children, who will be the next generation of leadership for the community. As you know, the Sulan Chamber has been around for 150 years. The Sulan Initiative is approaching its 40th anniversary, so we feel very, very good about that, but that would not be possible without our cooperative and collaborative relationship with the City of Sioux City. So, we're grateful for the action that you took recently. I will tell you that with changes with some of our major employers, again, I would direct your attention to the letter that is freestanding within that document, we talk about some of the losses related to TSI revenue in the last year. We've seen some major acquisitions, we've seen some major relocations, and that has adversely impacted the organization. We will be on a very aggressive fundraising campaign in the next 12 months, and it will include shifting one of our full-time Chamber employees to also have a new role with the Initiative to work on some of that revenue and recruiting new investors into TSI. If there are no more questions, thank you for your time, thank you for your support. If you have any subsequent questions, or if the annual report generates questions, do not hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen concerns. Anyone want to be heard? Yeah, come on up.
I have a citizen concern that is not on your list tonight.
No, that's fine. Just your name and address, please.
My name is Tony Strong, S-T-R-O-N-G. I live on the city's north side, 3362 Dupont Street, Sioux City, Iowa, 51104-1732.
Go ahead.
I am here tonight to express some concerns. I have been dealing with your engineering department all summer, and I'm tired of looking at them and, and getting absolutely nowhere. Earlier this spring, I was sent a letter in the mail stating that you were going to come through and put in a sidewalk. The sidewalk was going to take no longer than 10 days. That was a lie. The sidewalk was supposed to go with the lay of the land. That was a lie. I was supposed to receive sod or seed put down at the end of the project. That was a lie. I am now, what, four months in on this, and I have pictures here, I can leave with you guys. Little bit of a backstory, my house was built in 1921 on 120 acres, so my land is higher than everybody else on a five-block, five-block span. And that five blocks, there is also no streetlights. Mr. Mayor, if I may, come approach you and give these pictures to you.
Yep.
The first picture shows me standing in my driveway, looking towards my house. I was without a driveway for 35 days. The other pictures, you can see where my water main is now sticking up, and there is a four-foot hole, 150 feet long, where you guys took a semi naughty dump truck, a semi-load of dirt off of my front property. I am now left with a hole, and no one has been back in well, well over 30 days, which again brings me here tonight. So, the problem is, I have a, since there is no lights in any of the area, I installed my own light in front of my house. So, there is four kids that live at 3427 Pond E., that are now coming down at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, on their electric scooters to jump off of my sidewalk into the hole that you have left me, and just to make his brothers and sisters laugh because they think it's funny. I want you guys to know that you guys have left me with a problem. I have told you from day one, this is going to be a problem, and when, not if, when this kid cracks his melon on the city property, it is going to be a you problem, not a me problem, because I never wanted this. The sidewalk that you guys are trying to put in literally goes nowhere. It goes to the end of the block, which is an alley that you guys have blocked off back in the early 80s. Something needs to be done, and I'm not getting answers. A barricade needs to be put up, these kids need to be told to stop it. When I called the City of Sioux City Police Department, the woman that answered the phone told me that, oh, we're too busy, go, just go tell them to leave. When I did that.
Let's give him a chance.
The 38-year-old woman came and lit me up, told me that the city put the sidewalk there for a reason, they can do what they want.
Let's give him a chance to talk, okay?
We are in the middle of this sidewalk, fix, still fixing this. We've been in contact with the contractor to get him back out there, and we've had not much luck with him, and we've had to start charging him more days for this project. We've asked him to get out there and fix these. We've asked him to get out there and fix these problems.
Well, I drove by this because my daughter lives right around the corner and I looked and this is another one of these. There you, I don't know who engineered these Gordon, but how come they're five feet higher?
That was a mistake on our end and we're, we're going to be replacing that, taking that down.
But winter's coming. I don't disagree with the gentleman. We've got to get, if he doesn't get there, you gotta get somebody to get there and charge him back.
Like you said, we've been in contact with him. He's getting ready to mobilize on that.
I have been lied to since day one. I was told this sidewalk was going to go with the lay of the land.
Understand, we're trying to, we're trying to solve your problem here. We're trying to solve the problem here. I just want to, I think you owe this gentleman a date certain when that contractor is going to be there. So can you get ahold of him?
I can.
And give him a date certain so that we know exactly when. And then if he's not there, get somebody there to do it. You guys gotta drive by it.
Pictures were quite.
I was gonna, I was gonna email you Bob, and then I forgot.
We're, we're, we're gonna fix that.
For a weekend and I didn't email you, but this is the second one of these that we've got problems with. Did we fix the other one up on Morgan Street? Bob, I sent you.
The one with the handrail?
This is the same one.
The handrail is not a solution for the.
No, that's the same one though.
No, it isn't. No, that one was up on Morgan Street or something that guy sent me the picture of. Well, anyway, we're not putting a handrail, are you?
No, 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 we're lower, yes. We have to take out a tree and wait for contractors blame the tree guy, so it's.
Is there a reason, did they explain there maybe it's the tree? That it went from ten days to so long or the contractor is just not staying on top of it?
Not staying on top of it.
You got a bond on him?
I'm sorry.
Is there a bond on the contractor?
Yes, there is.
Write a letter to the bonding company. That he'll get there when his bonding, I hope I don't have bonded, but if I do.
No, I don't think you do. We just gotten talked with him on, on Friday and he's, he's been in contact with us. I'm going to give him a call first thing in the morning.
All right, get this gentleman an answer.
What do we, what do we post to make it so that they're not jumping that sidewalk?
Well, the city of Sioux City Police Department is too busy. They can't do anything, so I don't know what you guys are going to do.
I'm asking for a solution on that as well.
Kind of a.
Let's get some city barricades out there for now.
Yeah, we can get that out there.
Let's get some, the thousand man can drop those off even tonight if he's not too busy, right?
That's true and call him right after this meeting.
Think you need to do that.
And in the pictures you can see they took down my mailbox and never even put that back up. I had to do that.
All right, all right, well, let's see if we can get a solution.
I'll get your contact out there.
May we keep these photographs?
Those are yours to keep and I hope, I hope, uh, I don't have to call your city engineering department again because this has been a headache all summer. I've talked to them, I don't know how many times, I've lost count.
Okay, we'll get on it. Thank you for coming.
Cause Shannetta has been started.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counsel.
Mayor Bob Scott. I'm sure you're all familiar with who I am.
Give your name and address.
So Steve Carelli here, nineteen hundred Fairbanks Street. And, uh, you know, we're here this evening as a, kind of my neighbors and I as a fact from fiction deal. Because we hear a lot of, a lot of rumors floating around, you know, whatnot. I have approached some of you, you know, directly on some of the issues with the flood control in the riverside area. Still doesn't lay some of the rumors to rest to me. One of the rumors I hear is that there's a couple of the property owners down there that are not really going to be willing to let their property loose to complete the flood project. Can anybody here elaborate on that? There, 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 there's some of the, I'm hearing from one of the neighbors up the road where the flood control project needs to be completed. That a couple of the property owners do not want to let loose or they're not willing to let loose of their property. Now, this is the same thing why this program failed years ago to get flood control in that area. Is this, does anybody know, is there any truth to that?
I think that's just a rumor. I really do. We have just started contacting folks in that area. The project to expand that levy is a two or three-year project. We have to get permits and permission and all kinds of studies and things done from the Army Corps of Engineers, from the state. So we're really not near, you know, making offers of real estate or anything like that at the moment. So I do think it's rumors. I think they know that the project is just in its infancy. It's just beginning, but we haven't taken any steps for anything like that yet.
Okay, well, I mean, I appreciate all the explanations and whatnot that is concerned citizens. We don't want to see this thing get brushed under the rug.
No, it's not going to get brushed under the rug or the table, anything like that.
And it's something we don't want you all worrying about. You have enough on your plate to worry about. And I think that, I, I just hope that you understand and your neighbors understand that this council is just trying to be proactive and say, look, we don't want this to affect anyone ever again. And so we want to do what's right and we're trying to take those correct steps to, to do so because, yeah. But I appreciate you being here because lord knows we can't call and text or talk to everyone all the time. But just try to at least set the record straight.
Steve, if you look at item seven E today, consulting service agreement for technologies, that's actually beginning that process, so you know.
Right.
Just barely starting.
One other question, an area of concern is of course, I for one, don't feel safe down there without flood insurance. FEMA is only going to try to help. That was just a little bit of help. We appreciated it, but it was nothing. And with that said, flood insurance is something that I have to look in. I won't feel comfortable going into next spring without it. But how are we classified in that area now? And at what point will that be determined?
The flood map has not changed, so the flood insurance is not required. So it should not be that expensive to.
That we have, that we've signed up for a program that allows for flood insurance. I can't remember what the program is called. This, this came up, this came up in the summertime when, when you were all told by agents and other people, you couldn't get flood insurance. But you could all that time. What's the program the city of Sioux City is in, Bob? That allows, allows the people, the residents to get flood insurance?
National Flood Program?
Yeah, the National Flood.
But everybody can get flood.
Everybody can get it though.
That was a. That's what I tried to say at the beginning. Anybody can buy flood insurance. It's just whether you're in a floodway or flood zone or not, the price varies.
And if you're not in.
We're still not, they, they haven't changed the map, so you're still not in a floodway. So you, it should not be.
But I did get a quote on my flood insurance and they want five grand a year, basically, for the flood insurance.
Who, who quoted that?
I went through the FEMA program into one of their, you know, and I stopped in my tracks after one quote.
You should talk to your own homeowners.
Oh, they don't, they don't, that's the same one that told me years ago I couldn't buy flood insurance, so.
Double, double check with them and is there a way we can get the word out that we've got this national flood program that we are?
But everybody has, I mean, the problem is agents don't want to sell that stuff. They don't get any commission.
But Mayor, I think maybe, I don't know if they're aware of that though.
No, they're aware of it because I'm, when these guys said you couldn't get it, I called my own insurance man and asked if I had a house and, and he said, absolutely. He sold it to people that, and it was not that expensive. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I not, I'm not going to say his name, but he works for a big company and, and I call, he's, because he had a homeowner out there that had it. He said, you should have flood insurance. You're in a low-lying area here. And he said it was only like six hundred bucks for that basement of that house. So.
So is Sioux City part of the National Flood Protection?
Yeah, because we've done everything they say we have to do to, you have to do what they tell you to do. And if you don't, you don't qualify, but we've always, we've always had it available.
So we can get reasonable price flood insurance.
That's what I, that's what the man told me that I called him way back when it flooded, Steve. That's all I, I'll give you his name when we're in private.
But also for Steve and others, isn't there some certificate or something we can give them to say, here's, this is what shows you that we're in that national program?
If they go to National Flood Insurance, they have to go to the map. The map, I, I, I don't sell this stuff, but I take their tests every year because they give you four hours of free education. And as long as you're, there's a map and you, your house is in a map of what, what, what kind of insurance you need. So it shouldn't be any magic to it.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Well, that's answering my questions. I don't know if any of the folks have any concerns or not, but I thank you for hearing me out. And I think this is real educational if nothing else.
Anyway, that, that is beginning the process that you were asking about earlier. So we're on, we're doing, we're moving, but it's a slow process. I'm not going to promise anybody.
Well, and I'd like to thank you all for what you have done for us there, so.
All right, buddy, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The problem I have with the.
Name and address, please.
Dana Andrew Zeitler. I'm homeless right now.
Okay.
I live with my mom at twenty-eight fifty-five Rebecca, but didn't, it did not work out.
Okay.
When I, when I returned to Sioux City from Norfolk, Nebraska, I was driven here by the, by the, um, county, Madison County Sheriff's Department. Judge Long in Madison County said, well, you know, we'll take you to Sioux City. So I said, okay, fine, whatever. Okay, I got to the Gospel Mission. They said, we're taking you to the Gospel Mission. I said, fine, okay, well, you know, I'm down on my luck, whatever. Okay, so I get down there, the officer says, you're fine, you know, you'll be all right. I walk into the Gospel, Sioux City Gospel Mission. They say, well, we're full right now. I'm like, well, okay, I just came from Norfolk. They dropped me off. They thought I had a room here. They said, no, you don't. They said it's going to be, I believe it was three to four days. So I had nowhere to go. And I just think it's, I mean, growing up in Sioux City, going to school here, graduating from Western Iowa Tech here, and to be treated that way was disrespectful and I was, uh, I'm still upset about it.
It shows that you're upset and I appreciate that. Is there a reason that the officer from Norfolk brought you here without ensuring that you had a place to stay? I mean, is, I find that more disrespectful than the Gospel Mission being full.
See though, uh, it was a miscommunication, but, um, there's nothing I could have done about it. I told him the story. I told him all the details.
Why did Norfolk bring you back here? Why did you want to stay in Norfolk?
I didn't have a home in Norfolk.
Okay.
I'm from Sioux City. I was in, living in Niobrara, Nebraska. Broke up with my girlfriend at the time. Went to Yankton because that was the closest homeless shelter. And well, that's a different story, but, um, I served three weeks in jail in Yankton for a charge, for a charge of trespassing at the homeless shelter, which they said you were, I was kicked out. I did not have any idea I was kicked out of the homeless shelter. I went to the homeless shelter. I was arrested and I served three weeks in jail up in Yankton on a trespassing charge, which I did not. I mean, I was supposed to talk to the district attorney up there for a plea agreement, but I served three weeks for nothing, I believe nothing. And, um, and, and that was Judge Sorenson up there who tried to try me three times. When I said, I'm not guilty, I didn't do anything wrong, uh, but she wouldn't listen. So I served my time up there and eventually had to go to Norfolk to their homeless shelter, which was a real disaster. Because I went to the homeless shelter thinking everything's fine. There's only one homeless shelter in Norfolk, Nebraska. And it's supposed to be run by a Christian organization. I show up, I just got out of the hospital. They said, well, are you suicidal? I said, no, I'm, I want to go to the homeless shelter. I don't need, I mean, I have type one diabetes and I have, uh, problems with that. So they said, well, you know, we got to let you go. I mean, you're diabetes, which has been terrible. They said, we'll let you go to the homeless shelter. They gave me a ride down there. So I went to the homeless shelter and they said, well, you have to have a, a test for, you know, a urine test. They said, I took one at the hospital. I'm not on drugs. I've never taken drugs. And I could not physically produce, I drank water and all that. They kicked me out of there. They said, if you can't do it, you got to hit the streets. So I hit the streets of Norfolk, a town I've never hardly ever been in. And went to the, seen a guy on the street. I mean, the homeless population in Norfolk and Sioux City is, is way out of hand. There's no doubt in my mind. I mean, I've experienced, I've talked to many of these people. The police, they don't know how to handle, I mean, eh, it's, it's not a good situation. And anybody can become homeless. I was living in Niobrara. I draw disability. Had a van, I got a van. It's in Yankton actually, because, um, you know, I couldn't get it. You know, I have no family, just my mother and we are in a terrible disagreement. So, and you know, I, I moved away from Sioux City for twelve years. So I had no real friends here. I mean, I've run into quite a few of them now, but.
What exactly do you want us to do?
I think the Gospel Mission needs to be managed better. When, when you show up and you've lived here and they're taking in all these, um, people. I mean, I'm a citizen of the city. I paid taxes here for how many years? I've worked here.
Let me just not, we don't control the Gospel Mission. We don't give them any, we don't give them any funding and there's no way we can control how they operate. So that, that.
Don't you think that homeless people like me should have a, some kind of assistance?
Warming shelter is an example.
Okay, they sent me to the warming shelter. I went up there. They said, you don't, you have to have a physical disability to get in there. I said, I don't have one. They said, okay, we can't take you.
Their winter shelter hours start on November first. So I know that doesn't give you a solution today.
Right.
But November first, they'll be open for their winter hours.
Right, I, I, after going to like three or four different places, they, I finally figured that out. I went up to Sunnybrook Church and she said, well, I'll call over there. She called over there. She said, well, November first, you know, it's getting cold out, okay? I spent a night, it was like thirty-some degrees.
It is, but you mentioned that you receive a disability check, so you in fact do have a disability.
Yes, yes, I do. Here's, here's what happened.
Well, I'm just saying, bringing that up because perhaps you can get into the warming shelter if you share that information with.
No, I couldn't. They never asked, I.
Well, now that you know though, you can offer the information rather than.
I went up to the warming shelter and their hours are, you, you can't hardly tell the hours. The hours have changed. The hours on the door are not what they are now.
Well, you're in the right place. Matthew, council member, is on the board there. So perhaps he can, was on the board. Perhaps he can get a little more information for you.
The other thing is, have you spoken with anybody in our HUD office downstairs to get on like the, the HUD list?
I just filled out an application and it's in right now.
Okay.
Good.
And I've, I've had section eight housing in Allen, Nebraska. I've had section, I've had housing here before. It's just, uh, when I got into town, I went to the neighborhood services and they said, well, it's going to be like three weeks. Man, that's a long time to wait, you know? I, I know there's a lot of need there, but I believe that, you know, people like me that, that have worked here, that have went to school here, that have graduated from college here. And there's, you can't tell me there's not housing out there. I know there is, you know, I'm not dumb. Uh, I think the system could be run much more efficiently and people should be, not be sleeping on the streets.
Okay, well, we funded money to the warming shelter, but again. Okay, well, we funded money to the warming shelter, but again, we don't run those organizations. They have their own board of directors, so there's not much we can do about that.
Okay, well, I just want some names, numbers or whatever, because I don't, I don't like to see.
Why don't you wait and, and Matthew will talk to you after the council meeting and get you some help.
Okay, what time is it? I have to actually go to the, uh, go eat, because I am diabetic and I have to eat something tonight and.
Well, we'll be done here in just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name's Brady McMahon. I live over in Riverside over at fourteen-hundred River Drive South. I just have a few questions on plans, I guess per se, towards the flooding. Is there anything in place? I understand you guys are working towards repairing or extending the levy, but is there anything in place or a plan in place where if this is to happen next year or even the year after, that there's something in place to kind of help protect us a little bit better than what there is now? Because the small one that was there wasn't big enough and I don't think was put up soon enough. And I'm just kinda curious on that and I understand we can get flood insurance, but I also have been told by a couple insurance agents, even if we had flood insurance, it's only gonna cover basically what we owe on things. So if I had a mortgage, it'd cover the mortgage. It's not gonna give me any equity that I had in my home. So everything that I had or that me and my family had for the last ten or fifteen years that we've built is out the door. You don't get reimbursed for all of those things.
No, you're right. Most insurance.
Which is kind of the joke with insurance.
Right.
So, I understand the, we could have had it. I didn't even know, not being in a floodplain, that you could have it. And now that I've done the research, I do know that, so I guess it is something, but, um, it just, it's, I wanna know if there's a plan in place or if we can get a plan in place for something different for a levy or maybe even pumps to have on if we know there's a storm, like in this last situation. It's not like we didn't know the water was coming.
And I don't wanna speak for the council or if the city manager has anything else to shed light on, but I will say that while it won't be as permanent as the extension of the levy, you know, in the interim period, I do think a lot of lessons were learned as far as, you know, how we can mobilize, what needs to be done in order, in order to address that faster, but I don't know if Bob had something.
Taking the work of the, who gave us the?
National Weather Bureau.
The National Weather Bureau. That's what we went by. And then finally we're like, no, that's not adding up, and that's when they deployed.
What I could say is, in this past flood, we relied on the information from the National Weather Service and measurements from the Corps of Engineers that were proven to be inaccurate. Going forward, we will, uh, we thought we erred on the side of, of overbuilding. That turned out to be not correct. Uh, we will now use what we've learned from this time to know that we have to extend that temporary barrier further until we reach a point where we don't need that, because we've, we've created a permanent solution. We had some issues with pumps this year where we had all our pumps placed. We bought extra pumps, those, or rented extra pumps. Those pumps then did not work, which caused some delay. So, we're using everything that we, that we took from this flood to make sure that things like that don't happen again.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Matthew.
Nothing.
Julie.
I don't have anything this week either. I think we had a really good meeting. We covered a lot of points and issues and.
Alex.
Yeah, I don't have exceptionally, a lot of different things, working on different stuff with city staff members and appreciate everyone's help, but no, nothing further.
Dan?
Nothing further, mayor.
One of my family members, Gordon, sent me a text today and said, what are they doing on Twenty-eighth and Hamilton that you've torn that street up and put gravel down and they don't seem to be working on that, so. Sometimes these contractors need to real-time, realize that winter's coming.
I'm glad you brought that up, because actually my wife brought that up.
It wasn't your wife that did it, but my son did.
I was just told about that one today and that's a, that's a mid-American gas company. There's their contractor. They've been notified. They didn't realize that the contractor hasn't been attentive to that spot.
So they're gonna be jumping on that radar.
Yeah, it's, if, if, and, and I don't know why they left it just unblocked.
It was the same reason the phone company left it un.
Fair point.
All right, so you're on it?
Yes.
Matthew's wife and my son will have action there pretty soon?
Hope so, yes.
You're gonna be really.
I move adjourned. Second?
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Thad?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye. I'll take the source one, but I have.